Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's great to connect with you through the I Love Seaville Network. My name is Jerry Miller. We are live on 12 Facebook pages and I've been looking forward to this interview. Sina McGill, the first place vote getter in the Charlottesville City Council race is sitting next to us. We're gonna kinda do a flip book of her campaign from start to finish. She put so much blood, sweat and tears into this election and ladies and gentlemen-
Actual blood, too.
First place! First place! We're gonna welcome her to the program in T minus 30 seconds. We'll thank two of our favorite clients. We're an advertising agency here. Interstate Pest and Service Companies, anything that you see from a branding and advertising standpoint in the marketplace originates on the first and second floors here in the Macklin Building. The business started in 1969 with the first generation. His name is Mr. Robert Wells. He used sweat equity, much like Sina did with her campaign, to build a business, his personal truck and payphones around Charlottesville to build a company. Today Interstate has four generations of family behind it, almost 100 employees. They're committed to leaving Charlottesville and central Virginia in a better place than they first arrived and they have a working footprint of the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. Also Dr. Wagner of Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine, good friend of the program, one of our favorite clients. Who's got your back? Dr. Wagner's got your back through chiropractic care, physical therapy and sports medicine. Judah Whitkower, you are a director. I cannot underestimate the value of Judah Whitkower to this program. Judah, seven years and counting as team members, I love you, homie. Let's go to the studio camera, Studio Cam, and welcome Sina McGill to the show. Congratulations!
Thank you.
Amazing! Hasn't set in? Is it still setting in?
I think so. I've got some paperwork that I'm gonna go drop off to City Hall when we leave here, so hopefully paperwork makes it real.
When you were at- were you watching the vote count at Three Notch?
Oh, I was.
Okay. So you're at Three Notch and guys, Three Notch was where the- is it called the viewing party?
Watch party.
Watch party?
Watch party for the Democrats for Alba Marle and Charlottesville.
Okay. So give me- I wasn't there. I wish I had been there. I have a little boy.
I understand. My poor daughter, who had woken up at 3:30 that morning, when my husband got up at 3:45, she found- he found her out there watching cartoons. We're like, "Excuse me?" So she was- she was falling asleep on my mom's shoulder-
At Three Notch?
At Three Notch, around by about 8.
And she's 12?
11.
11, okay. What was the buzz like first?
Well, it started, you know, getting like pretty intense and then every- then all the computers went down.
The election website went down, right?
And so, and then Ivy was up there. Ivy who's- Ivy and Suzanne are the co-chairs for the Democratic Party and Ivy Hinton was up there explaining to everyone what was going on. And then her mic wasn't really working, so it was hard to hear over everybody. And then at that point, I think I was fixating on getting some food-
Okay.
-because I hadn't really eaten much all day.
What'd you get?
They had macaroni and cheese and their kale salad. The kale salad at Three Notch is really awesome.
You liked it?
Yes. As is their chicken satay. And their macaroni and cheese was really good, too. And that's- that's what I remember eating.
Okay.
And then my husband had followed, had come up, he's like, "Four precincts are in, you're at the top of all four." I'm like, "What? Really?" And then they talked about the computers. I was like, "So that could be wrong numbers, honey." I mean, just don't- he's like- and he was getting more and more excited and getting kind of like this, like big-eyed and like, "I'm not gonna believe it until I see it all the way." It could like- you just never know.
So people coming up to you, were they like, "Sina, this is happening here"? Or were you just like taking the mindset of, "You know what? Until they say it's officially done, I'm not gonna celebrate"?
Yes. I'm like that, though.
Yeah, I'm like that, too.
I don't-
Put the cart before the horse?
I wanna make sure. And because there's nothing worse than thinking you've succeeded at something to have it ripped out from under you at the last minute.
Right.
And so I'm just like, just-
So you're like a manager expectations?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
We'll just sit there, we'll figure it out, you know? And if I don't, yes, I'll be sad, but then I go on to Plan B. And, yeah.
I gotta give you some props, okay? So the first time, you've come on the show, I think four times. The first time you came on the show, you were sick as a dog.
I was.
Like, and like, to your credit, you still showed up when probably 95% of the people would've mailed it in and put us in a tough spot and you still came and like you, I think, were like cough medicine-
Oh, that was a lot of Dayquil involved.
A lot of Dayquil, okay? And anybody that takes Dayquil or NyQuil knows it messes with your head.
I really cannot remember what I said on that interview.
So from there and like, to your credit, you were sick as a dog, to now, I mean, get- put that in perspective. I mean, okay, can I just say badass?
Thank you.
I mean that.
Thank you very much. I mean, I- Michael and Lloyd were great running mates. I really felt like it was a team effort.
Okay.
And I just- and there were so many people, I mean, there is no way this was a single- like, I didn't do this. I did this with a lot of people helping me. And I'm afraid if I start naming people, I'm gonna forget people and so I don't wanna name anybody except for my mom and my family. And my- I mean, my aunt came up here from Alabama back in June to help out and my, you know, my mom worked- worked all day at precincts, both in the primary and in the election. I had people who I grew up with at the community, I grew up with at Nelson, you know, who were sending in monetary support and who would give me all sorts of emotional support throughout the campaign. You know, my husband, he didn't- he only knocked on doors once, but if without him, I mean, helping manage childcare-
Right.
Helping manage all the background stuff. I mean, he and my daughter, I tried to keep out of the public eye as much as possible because it's- that's not their thing at all.
Sure.
And, you know, an 11-year-old, I'm trying to keep her life as normal as possible.
Right.
But without all of that support and without the Democrats in Charlottesville helping out and it just- it wouldn't have been possible. I mean, I had support from friends who I've known for 20 and 30 years. I had support from friends I've just met during the campaign and without- without those people, I wouldn't be here right now.
I am so impressed. I always watch, so I like- like to follow, I'm like a political, especially at the local level, junkie for this stuff. I'm a junkie for local news.
Uh-huh.
Like that. And this undoubtedly has like monopolized the news cycle, as it should. And I've watched, and I'm gonna embarrass you and give you props again here, I've watched of how like your brand and your platform and campaign just got more momentum and like stronger and like more cohesive and more like, you know, heading north, if you may. I wanna throw this to you here, like, social, you were doing great. You're- obviously have the gift of human connection that comes from like your professional background and the fact that you're just a likable person. You ran a campaign where you came across of like, "I'm from this area, I'm a local girl that's committed to doing good things to this community and leaving it in a better place than when I first arrived." And that is not easy. Like, I guess the word is approachable or authentic or genuine?
I don't really know how to be any other way.
Right! That's- that's not easy for people, though.
The thing is, is, I mean, when I was- when I was like 16 and I'd go hang out at a party, I'd be talking to a guy I had a crush on who obviously had broken up with his girlfriend. I'd be talking him back into going out with his girlfriend.
And you had a crush on him?
Yes, because it was so obvious. I just- well, that's kind of like why I ended up going into psychology. There was all sorts of, I mean, it was- it was something that fit me. I like people. I like them. I honestly like people and I honestly believe that we start out positive towards others and that being negative towards others is a learned thing. And I- I think we can help people unlearn that and I think we can work to making this a place that everyone truly is in a better place and I want this to be a good city for everyone.
What was Sina McGill as a teenager like?
Ooh. Sina was a little angry as a teenager.
Were you?
Sina was a little angry as a teenager.
Some angst?
Sina, yeah. See, there was a lot of- there was a lot of stuff in my life.
Okay.
It wasn't- it wasn't an easy childhood. It wasn't an easy growing up.
Okay.
And-
Because you don't embody those qualities now.
I did a lot of therapy.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, I'm all for therapy. Get it if you need it.
Well, I mean, isn't it like being like de-stigmatized now? I feel like it's almost being like embraced.
I mean, I've suffered from anxiety and depression since I was about 12.
Really?
Yeah. It's one- it's one of the reasons I went into mental health is I wanted to work with people, showing people that just because you have an illness doesn't mean you're defined by that illness. And I am totally open about that. I worked for Honor Own for a year as a peer support counselor.
Okay.
It just- and it- I mean, for me, I take an antidepressant and it helps me tremendously as, like I said, a lot of therapy to do.
I think someone with your background in therapy is like critically important to the crossroads we're at with Charlottesville, Virginia.
I hope so. I mean-
Because the whole community needs therapy.
In general, I think the entire United States needs therapy. But, I mean, and we- and hopefully more and more people start accepting that it's okay. It's okay to have feelings that, you know, it's okay to recognize the pain we've gone through, whether as children, as young adults, whatever trauma we've experienced and that you can't measure each other's trauma against other people's trauma. Your trauma is yours. And it's really hard on your family and your support network if you don't get help with that because you tend to take it out on the people who are closest to you. So, you know, getting help is, it's- I always have wondered how we think with our- with our- our medical insurance, it's for some reason, they keep taking the eyes, the teeth and the brain out of insurance and giving them separate insurances.
Right!
I mean-
And they make us choose, do we want dental coverage? Do we want eye coverage?
Or do- and mental health coverage?
Right.
You get like six sessions and you somehow, you're supposed to be cured in six sessions. And this is, it's kind of insane.
It's effed up.
And I think they've just taken out some of the more- and preventative care is such a huge piece-
Yeah.
-as well. And if people can get into a therapist when trauma first starts or when trauma's first there, then the- the time to heal is lessened as well as the intensity and the cost that it takes on the surrounding family and the person's life.
We try to like do three things with our guests, like humanize, personalize and localize. And when we're chatting with you, it's very easy to do. When you left Three Notched and you- I saw this on your Twitter, when you left Three Notch and you got to your house, there was this like awesome homemade sign on your door.
Yes!
Paint the picture first.
I have no idea who like left that there. I actually took a friend of mine's daughter home, who was an adult now, and she was working on the Jim Hindley campaign.
Okay.
And did an amazing job in the marketing of the Jim Hindley. She was awesome.
Was it Asher?
No, no. Yasmin is-
Okay. Asher was his campaign manager.
Yes.
Okay.
Yasmin was doing some marketing.
Okay.
And she was amazing. I just- I gave her a lift home because I've known her since she was in middle school and wanted to make sure she got home all right because like you asked me when I first started, yes, no, I did not have a drink all night. I knew I had to drive home and I knew I was exhausted, so having a drink, I probably would have passed out on the floor under a table before the numbers had come out.
And you were high on life anyway, at that point, right? Or high on exhaustion?
Because I was very punchy.
Yeah!
I was very punchy. And still, it took a day, yeah, but now I got home and there was this sign and I still- I still don't have any idea who left it there. It was- it was a UPS box or something-
It's like a cardboard sign.
It was a cardboard box that someone had opened up-
Yeah.
-and made from a cardboard box.
Right.
And had written, and my husband says it's got, he's like, he's very good at handwriting because he like went to a school where he had to learn with a fountain pen as a kid.
Wow.
Yeah. And he was in Switzerland.
Okay.
And so he was like, "That's a woman's handwriting." I was like, "Yeah, you've seen my handwriting. My handwriting is absolutely horrible."
Mine, too. Mine, too. Judah, if you go to Twitter and it's twitter.com backslash Sina for Seaville and click media, you will find the picture and we can put it on screen.
It was-
It was endearing!
It really was.
Right?
It was pretty awesome. I was like, yeah, that's my front door.
And it looks like-
You can see my- my poor front door where the handle has fallen off my screen door.
It looks like- and it looks like a couple people gave you like props on the sign. It's gotta be from like your neighbors, right?
I don't know who it's- I really don't know who it's from. I have no idea. Nobody has come forward and confessed to doing this.
I love stuff like that.
And there's- there are quite a few people who I know who could have been behind that.
I love it.
So I'm not really certain.
So when you and the family walk into your home?
Well, they went home earlier.
Okay, they went home.
Oh, yeah. My poor- as soon as we knew for certain-
They left.
I had an interview on TV and my daughter got a little bit of a second wind and she- she stood with me on that. But then my husband took her home, almost- she was home before 9:00.
So when you walk into the house-
And he had actually sent me a picture, but I didn't know-
Okay.
-until I walk- and then I'm walking up to the door, it's like 11 o'clock at night, I'm walking up to the door.
Sent you a picture of the sign?
Yes, but I didn't see it until actually after I'd gotten home.
Okay.
Because I couldn't hear my phone over the- and my phone had been kinda going nuts with people sending me congratulations and everything and I felt so bad that I couldn't get back to a lot of people until yesterday. And honestly, yesterday I slept half the day.
I had to ask that. Okay, the first thing you do when you walk into the house?
Yeah.
Do you kick off your shoes and like collapse on the couch or the bed?
No, no. I went to bed. I went to bed, but I still- and so I just sat there and I kept checking Facebook and everything and then I think I posted, yeah, then I posted some stuff, just thanking people. But I knew that my brain was pretty fried, so I didn't wanna say too much.
Right, right, right.
I mean-
That's a good rule of thumb for life. Using social media super late at night when you're tired, the- yeah, the cardboard sign. Yes, sir. Judah Whitkower, you get it up. It's on screen now, so we're showing everyone the sign. I am so impressed, I gotta be honest. Now, I guess, you know, you have so much hard work into it, blood, sweat and- you said actual blood? What does the actual blood mean?
Well, you know, I was in the ER three times in August.
What?
Yeah.
Because of- can I ask? I don't have to.
No, 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 it's fine. I mean, I'm- okay, so number one, I'm pretty much an open book. I- a long, long time ago, I decided-
You're an interviewer's dream, by the way. Because of that.
I decided that secrets gave other people power over me, so I didn't have secrets.
Interesting. Okay.
And if I didn't- if I needed to do something, I needed to be able to do it openly or not at all.
Okay.
And that's just- so I'm, again, unless it's something that could potentially really kind of embarrass my daughter or something like that, I'm pretty much out there. So as far as what surgery I had, so I beginning, the first weekend of August, I was in a dunk tank accident at West Haven Days. And, you know, I'm still working through the- through the exercise my physical therapist gave me to try to- to get this, it's my- I strained or tore part of my bicep muscle.
Get out!
Yeah. And then a few weeks later, I was in the emergency room for a mysterious stomach pain and then the fall, a couple of days again, back there again. And it did turn out that I needed to get my gallbladder out, which came out on September 11th. And I did make a few posts under the influence of painkillers and I learned my lessons on that. I had a few people say, "Sina, don't do that again and I won't." Take it away, take it away. After surgery and, let's see, oh, yes, Halloween, the day after, when we went trick-or-treating, I was dressed as a canvasser.
Okay.
And my literature came pouring out of my pocket and I stepped on it and slipped-
Stop!
-and then went straight down onto my knee.
Uh-oh.
I'm a klutz. I mean, I'm- this is why like when- when- when I tore my bicep muscle in the dunk tank, I just sat there going, "You're gonna go, need to get the fire department, I can't get out of here." And they're like, "You're-" I actually broke my arm once and no one believed it until the next two days later when they saw me in a cast.
Wait, the fire department got you out of the dunk tank?
Yeah.
Tell me that.
Oh, that was painful. That was never, if you can ever-
Did they use the Jaws of Life?
Oh, they'd make- they had this little built ladder thing that they put together, but the problem is it's just one metal bar.
Right, right, right. I've been in the dunk tank, yeah.
No, no, no.
Oh, the fire truck.
The weird fire ladder that they have-
Gotcha.
-that they had to put in because the only handle to get out of the dunk tank was on this side.
Right, right, right.
And the steps didn't start and they were these plastic curve-in steps-
Yeah.
-kinda like a- like a hot tub steps.
Sure, yeah.
But because it was this arm, there wasn't anything to grab here.
Got it.
So they put in this weird ladder that clicked in and it was one metal bar each, really thin, and you're barefoot and putting many pounds of pressure, I'm not going to say on TV how many pounds of pressure, on each foot as I getting out, I could barely- it was hard. It was really hard when you- it's like standing on a very thin-
Sure.
-strip of metal with a lot of pressure on it, hurts. Not your arm, it hurts your feet.
Legit blood, sweat and tears for Sina McGill under 2019 campaign for city council.
There was something I had done before all of that, too. I did something else before that. No, I just, you know, I have- because I have a child in school, therefore she brings new germs home all the time.
Of course.
And so you're getting fevers and stuff like that. And I also, I had Lyme disease for up- that got treated finally last year. It took- I had it for nine years, it was untreated.
What?
And last summer, 2018, I actually, they finally, it was, had been diagnosed and I started real treatment for 2018 and spring and summer of 2018. And with Lyme disease, they're finding now that you tend to have chronic mono, so, which never quite leaves you, so. But turmeric and monoloran really help with that.
Good tip.
So, yes.
So now, I guess, is the cliche, now the real hard work starts?
It's a different kinda hard work.
Okay.
And this is the kinda hard work that I've done more of my life, so I'm a little bit more comfortable with it.
Okay. Tell me about that.
Well, I've usually been in the background, working with people, working on grants, working on, I mean, when I started the Rapid Re-Housing Program with Pacham-
Uh-huh.
You know, I had to do VHDA and work with HUD and understand a lot of that lingo as well as reporting requirements and it's- that kinda work, that's what I have a lot more experience in. I don't have experience selling myself.
Right.
Campaigning is about selling yourself.
Being like a brand and advertising and yeah.
Yeah, and that's- it's really uncomfortable for me. I- I don't like doing it. It- I always did stuff in the past because it needed to be done, not because I wanted someone to pat me on the back to do it.
To give you props, right.
Um, but having to like bring that kinda thing up, it took me a while. It's- I think it's part of one reason you saw my campaign kinda slowly taking, is because I became a little bit more comfortable accepting-
So that's why I gained momentum?
-what I have done in the past. Yeah. I didn't like bringing things up. I don't, I mean, I just did it. And so I had to- I had to remind myself and I would be talking to someone, just like, "Oh, yeah, I did that." And they're like, "Why isn't that on your literature?" I was like, "I don't know, I just did it." And so my campaign just took a little bit longer, I think, to gain momentum because I'm not a very good self-advocate, I guess.
Self-promoter.
Yes, self-promoter.
What, um, okay, so what are the next steps here? What happens between now and when you're on city council?
Well-
Educate us.
Personally or-
Like, what's the process?
Well, I just got an email from the city about some paperwork that needs to be done.
This is Brian Wheeler?
No, this was-
Someone in the city hall.
Her name is K-Y-N-A, Kynna? I don't wanna mispronounce-
Okay.
-and Max.
Okay. I know Max Robinson.
Yes.
Yeah, she's great. She's come on the show twice.
And Ms. Thompson.
Okay.
Also, and I truly appreciate- I want to learn how to pronounce people's names correctly and I apologize.
I struggle with that, too. Yeah. You don't struggle with it, I struggle with it.
Oh, no, I struggle with it. Anybody, I mean, my name is S-E-N-A, believe me, I have lots of different pronunciations of the name. I'm used to it being all over the place. So there's paperwork to do, then we're gonna have an all-day training at the city, meeting the different department heads. Hopefully we'll be having some meetings where we can sit down and talk about how to kind of, the things we wanna prioritize from the get-go. Because, you know, and they can just be like true work group meetings. I also hope to spend some time with Heather, with our mayor and vice mayor.
Uh-huh.
Because-
Do you know them?
Yes.
Okay. Would you say you know them well?
I would say I am getting to know them better.
Okay, okay.
Knowing some, again, from a psychology perspective, knowing somebody well for me is very shaded.
Right, right, fair, fair. Because you're about to spend two years of your life with them.
They're both women I respect.
Okay, okay.
And I want to spend time working with them, getting to know them and any, I mean, they're doing a lot of good work. And, I mean, I've already started meeting with some- some people have gotten in touch with me from various commissions to sit down and try to- and I've been trying to do that throughout the summer, but there was always that kind of like, "I don't wanna waste your time-"
Yeah.
"- because I might not make it."
Sure.
So, but I'm really hoping to meet with as many people as I can beforehand to get an idea of what's going on, what things are already happening.
So is there like a swearing in or anything like that? What, I mean-
I think so, I don't know.
Okay, cool.
I don't know. I know at some point we have to sit down and figure out who's gonna be mayor. Um, again, a lot of the stuff I didn't, you have to, when you're campaigning, you really have to focus your time on what you can do something about now.
Uh huh.
Cause you've got so much coming in, you're learning so much about so many things. You have to prioritize your time.
Sure.
And I knew if I won, there would be time after winning to figure out what comes next.
Uh huh.
My family and I are gonna take a two week vacation.
Well earned.
We've been kind of planning this for a little over a year.
Okay.
The Democrats have a pasta supper fundraiser once a year and
Okay.
One wonderful person puts up their apartment.
What?
Um, in Paris for auction.
Okay.
And I won it last year.
Nice!
So, and then I've been saving up my mileage, my points for the last couple of years on my credit card, so we were able to pay for our plane tickets pretty much entirely through points.
So your family is gonna be spending some time in Paris? That is so baller.
Yeah.
Have you ever been uh?
Yes.
You've been to Paris? Oh, lucky duck.
Yeah, years ago, my cousin was living over there, he was going to school, and so I flew over there for two weeks with my roommate at the time. And just kind of went around and anytime a metro stop sounded interesting, like Alexandre Dumas exit, I would get off. And just kind of walk around the city and explore, and I don't speak any French. And I would be up in areas of Paris where there's just all these little old men sitting at the cafes with their dogs smoking. And I would just sit there and I would point to things on the menu and just smile and learn. I've, I've found traveling internationally, if you can learn how to say please and thank you. In the tongue, in the whatever dialect you are speaking there, it goes a long way.
And there's also something to be said about having that like positive energy about you and like people like, cause not, you know, not everybody has that. And like people are gravitated to that kind of energy.
That was my little brother just walked past.
Nice. Um, okay, throw this to you here. So, so the nitty gritty, um, I have to ask you about this.
Sure.
Any thoughts about mayor? Because a lot of folks, I don't think a lot of, some folks know this, I don't want to assume here, the five councillors vote amongst the five who the mayor is gonna be for that year.
No thoughts on that at this point.
Okay.
And I wouldn't until I talked to everyone involved yet.
To your team, to the five. Um, what are you um goals for your four years? What do you want to see from the city that you love so much over the next four years of your term?
Oh, there, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of things. Um, we've got, we've got some, and council has already started on a lot of things.
Right.
I really, I've, I've tried to say this repeatedly, that the current city council has done a lot of work and a lot of it is behind the scenes work that hasn't made it to like public eye as much yet.
Okay.
Um, like, we have this really aggressive climate change goal.
Okay.
I want to make sure we can meet it. It's great to have a goal, but we need to make sure we have the tools in place to actually do it.
Okay.
Um, and we've got the Climate Change Collaborative, the Charlottesville Climate Change Collaborative, and the Alamo County Climate Office. And there's a lot of very good work being done with Charlottesville, Alamo, and UVA in this area. There's a lot of good groups who have come together to work together and are doing a lot of good work in this, and we just need to keep supporting them and making sure that this is a priority. We also need to be working on the affordable housing problem. This is, if we can s- show, if we can do something about this, we can be a national model.
Yeah.
Because this is a national problem.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it is, you know, obviously I've got a lot of experience in the thirty percent in under AMI.
Uh huh.
But that is not the only place that we have an affordable housing issue. We do also have an affordable housing issue between thirty percent to eighty percent AMI.
Sure, and that goes under recognized.
I think it's getting more and more recognized.
Yeah.
And there's some other places who've done some great things, like Stanford University did some wonderful ideas in basically a land trust model so that people could make equity in their homes. For their teachers, they, they purchased homes, but the land was owned by Stanford and so the, so it kept an affordable house.
Uh huh.
So when the teachers would purchase the home, they could then resell them, but they resold them to teachers.
Sure.
And it kept it as a much more um.
Manageable.
Yeah. But they would still get a capital gains.
Sure.
So.
I love it. And this hits close to home, I think, for you, um, and I'm not gonna like, you know, sp- sp- you know, adri- Tenth and Page.
Yeah.
I mean, this neighborhood in a lot of ways, um, the epitome of uh vulnerability and gentrification and development and change. And, and trying to preserve the character of the neighborhood versus, versus what, um, I mean, see what's happening with Dairy Market and Dairy Central. We see the proximity to grounds, we see the proximity to hospital, to downtown. I mean, you are in like a hotbed of like change where you live.
Yes. Um, and there's been some issues I have seen as time went on, one of being, there's a lot of people who leave their homes to multiple inheritors.
Yeah.
And then not, there's no one of those particular people who can buy out the others.
Right.
So we need to find a way to help that, um, to help somebody buy their family home. We also need to make sure people know how to access assistance, both through LEAP, through, one of the things I was, when I was canvassing in that neighborhood and some other neighborhoods, I took the LEAP literature with me so that people could look and see some of the income requirements. And even if they were renters, they could apply for assistance to have LEAP come in and do a lot of energy retrofitting for free. We also, we just need to make that very user friendly. And it's gonna, I really think some of this is gonna need some door knocking. And maybe if we can hire, maybe we can do some summertime internships with high school kids. Or weekend internship with the high school kids to go out into the communities, to be knocking on doors and making sure people know about all the services. Cause you'd be amazed how many people who can qualify for some things just don't even know about it.
Right, right, right. Um, I'm excited for that. Um, Lloyd made this comment when we had um you guys on the show on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
And he said that um, myself, I'm speaking as Lloyd here, myself and Michael and Sina, we can work together. You know, we get along.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he said, bringing that aspect to council, and he compared it to current council, and this is his words, and it's on the right, you know, on the right. He said, current council has said that we don't trust each other, we don't get along. He goes, so bringing the element of you guys actually coexisting and getting along, and as he said, breaking bread and having a drink and meeting. What impact do you think that's gonna have on policy and on positive momentum and on impactful decisions in Charlottesville at city council?
I think it will give us a chance to sit down and hear each other and to compromise.
Without having like the guard up?
It's hard to compromise when you don't trust people. It just because you don't believe that compromise is gonna be honored.
Or coming from a good place.
Yeah. Um, and I keep saying, I do believe that everyone, I mean, I, I know that Michael and Lloyd are running for the, for the, for the right reasons. They ran for the right reasons. They ran, and everybody who ran in the Democratic primary, I felt, was running for the right reasons. They were running because they love this city. They weren't using this as a stepping stone to get into politics. They're using it because they want to make a difference here. And as somebody who grew up here, who stayed here, um, I find that is really important. And I've, I want my kid, like I said, I want my daughter to move back eventually. I want her to go off, explore the world a little bit, but then come home. So that later on, when she has kids, I don't have to uproot myself to go someplace and follow grandkids. You know, I would like to stay here.
I want the same, I want the same.
Um, and so that's why it's like, I, I was, I was joking at various points, I'm playing chess here with my grandkids.
Yeah, you're playing like a long thirty year down the road chess. You're such a baller.
I always have backup plans. I, you know, back when I worked in the homeless shelter, I had backup plans if I ever became homeless to the point that I was, you know, didn't have a place. I had places scoped out in Charlottesville where I would stay. Um, it was like if it ever got to that point.
Sure. Throw this to you. Um, this came up on Tuesday as well, and this is very prevalent on Twitter. Um, you guys, three white people.
Yes.
Win spots on council.
Mm-hmm.
Open ended with that topic, and then talk a little more specifics here. Um, there was, the, basically there was concern that there, there was more, not more diversity um with, with council. Like, right now, um, Dr. Wes Bellamy and Mayor Walker, African American.
Mm-hmm.
Um, starting, um, I guess in January, um, as we have Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Um, your thoughts on that topic?
Um, two thoughts. First, December ninth, I believe, I hope I have the right date on that, is the, the yearly Democrats meeting.
Okay.
I highly encourage anyone who wants to.
What happens at December ninth and that meeting?
It's, it's our kind of, it's our big yearly meeting. Um, it's when the committee of one hundred is elected, which honestly, if you show up, you're almost automatically gonna be on that because we rarely have enough people to show up for each precinct.
Okay.
Um, it's when leaders for each, for the executive committee is, is again, then elected amongst the people who were there. That's, I was the Carver co-chair.
Okay.
Um, and regretfully, I will be moving out of Carver and will no longer be able to be the Carver co-chair after sixteen years
Okay.
of being in Carver. Um, so, which is.
So you're moving?
Yes.
Okay.
We bought a house in October.
Okay, in the city?
Yes, oh yeah, yes. I'm not gonna leave, yes, it's in the city. Um, which it was very, it was very hard on us. I really wanted to stay in my neighborhood, but I really wanted a second bathroom. Um, having an eleven year old girl in one bathroom is just not fun.
I, I, I would imagine it's not gonna get easier either.
No, no, she's already discovered, she's much more of a girly girl than I ever was. Um, and she's already discovered flat irons and straight ir- straight things and like, yes. Um, but, I mean, to this very serious question.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, luckily, Mayor Walker will still be on our city council. Um, what it means is, it means that the councillors who are there need to make a serious effort and a concerted conscious effort to be listening to minority communities in order to represent them. Because it's not gonna be, it's gonna be harder to represent people if you're not, so it's one thing, like, if you go out to a friend's house and you are white, you are more than likely going to go to a dinner party or a hangout or this or that with majority white people. Um, so you're gonna get some input on a regular basis
It's like the whole cafeteria thing.
Perspective.
Yeah.
Um, I am lucky that I have a pretty mixed friend base, but it still does lean more on the white end of things. So it means that you have to make sure you are consciously going into places and seeking out the opinion of others who are not in your social circles. Um, that is where I feel it kind of, I don't think anybody innately can represent any, I can't innately represent women. I can't innately represent white people. But because my social circles tend to mix in those areas more, I have more, more knowledge of that area.
Perspective.
Um, so it means that you have to make sure you, again, consciously making a con- conscientious effort to seek out that knowledge to represent fairly.
Well said. Um, obviously you've given that a lot of thought.
Yes. Yes, I have.
Um, I um, I follow that closely. I know it's something that's gaining some momentum. Um, I'm curious to, and I think you'll be really good at this, I'm curious of how you bridge or how you create like that trust and that relationship that you have with Lloyd and Michael through a long time of working together with two newer uh faces and people, and Mayor Walker and Heather Hill.
Um.
You should probably have always been good at making friends, haven't you?
I think so. I, I had a very low self-esteem when I was younger. Um, and was actually incredibly shy. I actually still am kind of shy.
I would never have guessed that.
Nobody does. The thing is, is most people know me in situations where I feel like it's my home turf.
Got it.
So then I'm reaching out to others.
Uh huh.
Um, because I know what it's like to be that person in the corner quietly sitting there. So again, it's, it's about making sure I take the time to reach out and, you know, Mayor Walker and Vice Mayor Hill, I need to prove to them that I'm trustworthy. It's, the burden's not on them, the burden's on me. And which means being open with them, following through with my word, and being transparent. These are all things that promote trust in others, and I've always felt that you earn people's trust, that it's not something that they, they owe you.
Was you surprised that Mayor Walker um very publicly endorsed Michael like she did?
No, not at all. I mean, I think that's been, I mean, Mayor Walker was.
He was her campaign manager, yeah, when she ran.
Oh, I didn't know, really? I thought Kathy was.
Yeah, he was, yeah.
I did not know that. Um, like I, I, I thought um Kathy was her campaign manager, who was LaChandra's campaign manager.
Yeah, well, I mean, we had Dave here, we were talking about that with Dave Norris, he said, yeah.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, I, I have no way, I don't, it doesn't, I mean, Mayor Walker was at Michael's a primary party.
Right.
I, I kind of just always thought that was kind of common knowledge that they were, I mean, that she supported him and I have, I'm perfectly happy with that. I think that's great.
What are your thoughts on um, on um, one party having such a like, I guess stranglehold is probably safe to say on Charlottesville?
The stranglehold has happened because that's what the voters have voted.
Okay. Ooh, talk, walk that through me.
I mean, nobody has stopped anybody from running as a Republican or a Democrat or an Independent.
Uh huh.
It's what the people at the polls decide. It's not like there's some malevolent secretive machine out there. I mean, that's.
Cause that's the stigma.
Which, um, it's like, it make, it, I'm sorry, that does kind of get under my skin.
Okay.
Because being involved with the Democratic Party, we have been desperately trying to get people more involved. You know, nobody is going trying to undermine anybody.
Uh huh.
Nobody has gone out to the Republican Party or threatened people or anything like that. It's like, I'm sorry, if you want to go, do it, run! You know, there's a reason people tend to vote Democrat in this town because more Democrats tend to live here.
Right.
Therefore, they are voting and voting for their representation. If more Republicans or more people who are more moderate or more conservative want to be moving to the area and start flooding the area with their votes, go for it! That's what kind of gets to me. It's like, and I'm originally from Birmingham, Alabama, where you can say the Republicans have a stranglehold on the entire state. Um, it, it's, it's what hopefully our politicians are representing the voters. So, put political candidates out there, vote how you want to see people living and the majority, I mean, this was a really high election turnout.
Yeah, I was shocked. I thought it was gonna be at twenty percent.
It was like forty-three percent?
Right!
I read, um.
I think it was a true.
Forty-three percent.
Reflection of the.
Off-year election?
I think a true reflection of, A, I don't want to marginalize, a true reflection of um the community realizing the importance of the election. Also, a true reflection of the community being somewhat disenchanted, undoubtedly disenchanted with what's happening in the White House.
Oh yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm not thinking that there was anything about our city council race that really drove this many people. I truly think this had a lot more to do on a national level and on a state level as well. I mean, we had a huge amount of people from all across the country looking at Virginia.
Right.
Now Charlottesville, we had, we didn't have, you know, Sally had already won the primary, she was going in uncontested.
Right.
Um, Senator Deeds is a well-loved figure and.
Institution.
Um, well, institutions were being toppled in other places.
Touche.
Um, but Senator Deeds has done a lot. He might have been a little bit more moderate early on, but he has done a lot. And hopefully now with um, with us flipped senate and house statewide, we're actually gonna be able to do things like pass the ERA. Um, so I think, you know, two years ago, in twenty seventeen, the Virginia Beach election was a coin flip. And it would have, and I think a lot of people finally caught on that their vote actually matters. And so I feel really grateful that it, with forty-three percent turnout for an off-off-year election to have won that, I really feel like I am, like, I feel much better about representing Charlottesville than I would have if it was.
If it was like nineteen percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's well said.
It's, and I think fifteen percent was what it was in twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, I think it was like right under twenty.
Okay, okay, good. I'm not, I, a lot of this stuff I don't pay atten- I'm.
It's still kind of like scary, like, that it's like, you know, we need more voters.
The fifty-seven percent of the people still didn't go out and vote?
Exactly.
Yes.
I mean, ever thi- do you think about that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
No, it's frustrated me for years. Uh, how do you get more people to vote? And it's like, in frankly, it's like, if you didn't vote, I do not want to hear from you.
I don't want to hear you complain.
I don't want to hear you complain. You know, get out and vote. This is, this is a chance, and then if you want to make another difference, get on top of that. I mean, I understand if you don't have time, but if you can find some time in your schedule, get into a committee, start working. We have so many commissions and boards at the city level.
I think the deadline for that is tomorrow.
For this round, but there's always looking for um commissioners and board members. There's, I think, sixty-three boards and commissions
Yeah.
in this town. This, and these are what city council relies on to educate them about those very specific areas that need to be changed or worked on. Um, and a lot of times you don't have to, it's not a huge amount of time or effort, and you can really make a massive impact. So I'm gonna give a huge plug, go to the city of Charlottesville website and check out the boards and commissions and apply.
We got a question coming in. Uh, this question is for you. Congratulations on winning, Sina. Couple questions for you, I'm thoroughly enjoying the interview. First question is, how do we preserve cultural awareness within Charlottesville, specifically within our African American community? Second, what are your goals to help keep neighborhoods in Charlottesville like Fifeville, uh, Tenth and Page, Star Hill, um, African American and maintaining their integrity? It's a good question.
It is a good question. Um.
That's a challenge.
Oh, it's a huge challenge, and it's one that I'm not gonna know all the answers to by far. There's a lot of people who have been working in these areas a lot more intensely than I have.
Uh huh.
Um, I'm much more of a generalist, so I really want to be meeting with uh Dr. Douglas at the African American Heritage Center at the Jefferson School to talk to people on the Planning Commission, to help figure out where are, what are the areas, what are the pieces that are inhibiting? Things like a land, I'm very much in favor of what's called a land strike fund.
Uh huh.
Which would enable the city to purchase privately owned land.
Uh huh.
Housing, et cetera, to then hold it for a nonprofit organization. So, what we need to do, there's a couple of things that could help. Accessory dwelling units are one way to help people maintain their homes. And it's an also way to help people age in place. If they have, if they can build like a small apartment in the back
A cottage.
their house, a small cottage or a basement apartment. Um, in order to, if we can do that, we can then give somebody who might be aging in place as their home becomes more valuable and they're struggling to maintain it, another income stream that can help them. And if we do it with incentivization where it's a long-term lease, if you sign a long-term lease and keep it within fair housing market guidelines, then we will also.
Offer tax breaks.
Tax breaks and or a low interest loan.
Yeah.
Um, I have talked to some members of the hack about this before, and one person who has some really great ideas is Philip Duranzio. Duranzio, I'm, I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your name. Um, he has got, he's really figured out some of the background finance parts of this and has got the great idea of working with Habitat or AHIP to help even build those so they can do a more low-cost building of these accessory dwelling units and also maybe doing some matching with some of our tenants. Um, this is a way to both bring in some more affordable housing to the area as well as keep people in their homes. And again, as I mentioned before, the idea of finding some sort of loan program for somebody to purchase a house if they are the, a, a piece of inheritance. If it's, if a home is left to five or six people instead of the inheritors, then selling the home to a house flipper for the cash, if we try to incentivize that somebody then can purchase the home from the family for the, and keep it in their family. Um, these are some ideas. Uh, another thing we need, um, with Dairy Central going into place, there is the Virginia Department Virginia Department of Humanities, Virginia Humanities Found- the Virginia Humanities Foundation is going to be renting offices there and really want to do a project with keeping the history of Tenth and Page alive. And engaging these various projects to keep the history alive, to learn more about the history of Tenth and Page, Fifeville. And another thing we've got to do is we also have to keep our, we have to engage our arts and culture because Charlottesville, when it comes to arts and culture, is very white.
Yeah.
We have. We have a huge amount, Ty Cooper once told me, he's like, "You can walk anywhere and hear a white guy playing a guitar." He's like, "You can't always find music." He's like, "When I got back from New York, I can go listen to Puerto Rican, I can go, I can just walk down the street and head someplace else." You know, I've talked to a lot of my African-American friends and they go to Richmond, Norfolk, DC for entertainment. So, we need to be asking the African-American community, "Who do you want to hear? What can we do? What can we bring in that makes you?" Because what happens then, as someone becomes a more professional, as someone starts going up a ladder, they're going to leave because if you want to go out and listen to music and you raise your kids and all this, you don't want to have to get a babysitter that's twenty-four hours, you don't want to have to spend the night someplace, you want to be able to go out and come home. And so this, we forget that entertainment is a really important part of all of this. And so, it's important to engage our young community and our young professional community and say, "What is it you want to see here and how can we make it work? What could encourage you as a business owner?" There's Royal-
Royalty Eats.
Royalty Eats.
On Cherry Avenue.
On Cherry.
Yeah.
You know, let's make sure we're supporting Royalty Eats as an event space.
Yeah, building an event space right next to the restaurant. Well said.
So that we are in, so that we're choosing where we're putting our funding. And choosing as individuals where we're putting our money to help support and maintain this culture so that it can grow.
That answer was on point.
Thank you.
Another question coming in here. Two, a couple of questions, guys. We're going to be mindful of the councilor's time. We're now an hour in.
Okay.
You killed it.
You never did ask me about my music. You always, you always-
I will ask you about that. So this question's coming in is, congratulations, Councilor McGill, on the victory. I live in Almarle County and I follow the relationship between Almarle County and Charlottesville closely. As a Charlottesville city councillor, how will you look to improve the relationship between where I live and the community that you represent? That's a good question.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. I am, I, so, growing up on an intentional community, I grew up with consensus. And consensus is where you just keep working at it until it's acceptable to everyone. Now, from a city-county perspective, that's obviously going to be difficult, but I, I mean, I truly admire a number of our Almarle County supervisors already, our supervisors-elect. I was so proud of so many who, and I'm looking forward to working with them. I mean, I grew up in Nelson, my mom worked at UVA, we did laundry at City Laundry, I learned how to limbo at Skate Town. You came into Charlottesville to do everything. So, just because I happened to live in Nelson when I was a kid, I spent most of my free time in Charlottesville. Charlottesville is the city that you use and therefore it affects a ton of people.
See, Applicent.
And we need to be working regionally. I mean, climate change doesn't stop at our ten-mile radius. It keeps going. And affordable housing doesn't stop. We need to be working together to solve these problems because they're so much bigger than just this little ten-mile radius.
Well said. And I think, and Rebecca Downey, we will get to your question here. I think the mentality that's out there, there's actually a Facebook group about this that's like Boycott Charlottesville. And the mentality that's out there where it's like, someone that's in one of the counties in central Virginia that's choosing to boycott Charlottesville, I hope through this platform to educate or get this piece across. If you guys are trying to intentionally hurt Charlottesville or not support Charlottesville, this undoubtedly is going to have a trickle-over impact to Nelson, Louisa, Orange, Almarle, Flavana, Green. We're all just one big area. And central Virginia, for lack of a better phrase, and I don't know what the term, I guess it's central Virginia. Central Virginia in totality is just this big three-hundred-person city. And it just happens to be that this ten-point-two-seven square miles that is the city of Charlottesville is the heartbeat of the city of central Virginia. But central Virginia has to have Charlottesville be positive and successful for the overall totality positivity of central Virginia.
Yes. I mean,
It's frustrating, right?
I have intentionally looked at that list in order to make sure that I go and visit those, those people. I have been, I was actually at one of the restaurants on Election Day and said, "I'm here specifically because you're on that list." And thank you very much for, I am going to, I have been making sure, like, I try to keep that list. And if I have to do something, I check the list first to see if one of those people is on that list and then I go to support them.
Okay.
I am, I am trying to say, "Okay, boycott Charlottesville." I want, I want to give as much business as I can to those people on that list.
Love that.
Again, we make conscious choices. We make conscious choices with our dollars. We make conscious choices and I want to try to make as many conscious choices as I can. I mean, when I was a kid, we boycotted Nestle. It was, you know, they were giving, they did this horrific campaign in Africa with their baby formula. And giving it away for free until mother's milk's dried up and then they had to sell it. And it was just, it was, it was formula that wasn't passed in the United States and at least this is what I remember from when I was six. And I gave up eating, you know, Nestle's Crunch Bars for years. And anything else to do in Cadbury because I was in Nestle's company and, yeah. You make, you make a difference. And Nestle's listened and they, they at least did something.
Support Charlottesville. Rebecca Downey has this question. "New York City just passed ranked choice voting. Would you support this model in Charlottesville elections of the future?" Sally Hudson, a huge proponent of ranked choice voting.
I honestly do not know enough about that to, to answer it.
I respect that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a very deep-in-the-weeds political, governmental kind of question. I understand, I just want a governmental election. But my focus has much, much more been on what we can do in the city to improve the city.
Sure.
And ranked choice voting might be one of those things that we could do to improve the city. I just don't know enough about it to make an educated decision.
Chris has this question. Chris lives in Fifeville. "Do you suggest or do you think that the community would be better off with wards from a voting standpoint where each neighborhood or ward has their own representative on council?"
I've actually talked to a few people about this. This came up very early on in the primary, this came up. At this point, from what I understand, our numbers wouldn't necessarily benefit that. I mean, you've got to remember, two years ago, we didn't have, we had, we had just enough people running for school board to make the school board.
That's a good point.
We've got to remember, we don't always have this many people who are well-qualified running for a city council. Or running for school board or stepping up to this. And I don't know how density-wise we're ever going to, we could at some point get to that point. But you have to look at the density of places that have a ward system. And we're really not there.
Do we think, this is another question that's come in, and then I'm going to ask you about your musical taste here.
It's all over the place.
This question is coming in is asking about, and I'm going to paraphrase because this is long. Basically saying, Charlottesville city councillors are paid eighteen thousand a year, the mayor's paid twenty thousand a year. Do we need to increase payment for councillors to enable people of different backgrounds to run for council? Right now, and, 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 you know, I'm going to throw this to you. Right now, there is a belief that you have to be either an entrepreneur, self-employed, independently wealthy, retired, to be able to make a push on council. Because how can you survive at eighteen or twenty K for a job that's requiring forty hours a week of work?
And then a city that's AMI is eighty-nine thousand? Yeah. It's, as my history teacher would have said, H-E-double hockey sticks, yes. It's, we, if we want diversity on council of all types, we need to pay people. And I'm not talking pay them a ridiculous amount of money, but I am talking to pay them a living wage. A true, you know, pay somebody for their experience, pay somebody to, to come forward. I'm not saying like you sit there and pay somebody a hundred thousand dollars. But pay somebody, what a friend of mine's put out, it's like, "Well, they should make what teachers make." I'm like, you do realize that would be more than what city councillors make, right? Even if it was, it's eighteen thou, even at, so, yes. If you want somebody to be able to represent you and to answer the emails and to get back to you and to be transparent and to be able to serve, because the other problem is, what people don't realize is, sometimes people say, "Oh, well, it is only a fifteen-to-twenty-hour-a-week job." I'm like, "Yeah, but what job allows you to have a six o'clock meeting over here and a twelve o'clock meeting over here and a two o'clock meeting over here and a four-thirty meeting over here?" You know, there's a number of boards and commissions that city councils have to also sit on. It's part of their job description. In order to make those meetings, you can't have a normal nine-to-five job. You have to have a job that's flexible. That is the issue. It's the flexibility. It's not necessarily even the workload, now that there's a city manager in place. But I also think if you want people to respond to you, if you want a councillor who is there and gets back to you on a, on a regular basis, then you have to pay them to be there. This, otherwise, again, it's going to be people who is, it's going to have people who have the ability to change their shifts around, to work around various schedules, or who don't have to work.
What is the downfall of it, though? Is there any downfall?
I don't think so.
The downfall that I've read and I've heard-
Is the whole career politician thing? Really, you think forty-five thousand dollars a year is going to make a career politician?
That's a great counterpoint there.
I mean, again, I'm not talking like a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, I'm talking like forty-five grand. You know, a pay scale that is simply livable. I mean, again, that's not even fifty, that's not even like AMI. You know, fifty percent AMI. What is, you know, something that's, that again, then, you know, I think you should, I think we should. I think setting it at fifty percent AMI or sixty percent AMI is not a bad formula so that it keeps moving with the way our economic status works in town.
There you go. Now, last question, your hardest one, is your music affinity?
It's all over the place, you know, I-
She loves music, guys.
I actually do, I really do. It's a, I also, I spend a lot of time in silence, too. But, um, music, like I was listening to Lightning Bolt on the other way, on the way over here, as well as Mud Honey. And-
So you've got to be popping, is it Spotify, Pandora?
Use Spotify these days and I'll just like kind of, I've made like this really long playlist, you know. It's like Indigo Girls was on there, is on my playlist, as well as Bonnie Raitt, John Prine. Like I said, Mud Honey, Touch Me, I'm Sick, Iggy Pop.
What's the playlist or the songs you're listening to, like, "Oh my God, I'm running for city council, I need to get after it and get motivated here"?
Oh, Amanda Palmer, Mapa, Tasmania. Let's see, Yeah, Yeah, Yeahs, Maps. Heads Will Roll, Heads Will Roll's a good song for that. Polystirene, what's your name, X-Ray Specs. And, let's see, oh, Dead Kennedys was also on the playlist a lot.
Best show you've ever seen in Charlottesville.
Ooh, in Charlottesville?
Were you a tracks gal?
I did go to tracks. I've got Guar, totally graffiti'd my Army jacket back in the day.
Whoa.
Let's see, I also did, I think I did Lights for the Bodines once.
Really?
With somebody, yeah. I saw Fugazi when they came to town, or was it Fugazi or Nine Inch Nails or both?
Wow!
I saw Jane's Addiction when they were at Mem Jim. That was a pretty good show.
Yeah.
Seen Lightning Bolt here, I've seen Trans Am, Maserati. You know, the councillors back in the day when they were still playing. Tokyo Rose was a great venue.
Oh, yeah.
I used to go, and the Pud House. You know, actually, a friend of ours is on USA's Monsters coming back to town. He's actually going to be opening for Lightning Bolt in a couple of weeks. I, I mean, I saw, I saw a lot of really good bands over, and then I got, then I, oh, I saw Holly Go Lightly a couple of years before I had a child. Basically, I stopped going out to hear bands after my, oh, I used to do the door for the Hackensaw Boys all the time.
Really?
Yeah, no, they gave me their, their first mastered CD. I actually have their original mastered CD that they gave me.
Cool.
It was all signed, they gave it to me for my birthday. And then they actually got it remastered, so it's, it's like the, not the one that ended up actually for sale. And I'm actually in one of their videos at the very end.
Really?
Yeah.
The Hackensaw Boys? Those guys are awesome.
I also saw Beastie Boys, but that wasn't here, that was up in, that was up in Nova. And, I mean,
You just love music.
Stereo, no, did I see, no. Marquee Moon. Who does Marquee Moon? Anyways, yes. I saw television up in DC. Seen a lot of music.
I love it.
I like music.
You, you crushed this interview.
Thank you.
Seventy minutes.
Duh!
I'm grateful for your time.
Well, no, thank you for giving me a call. Thank you.
Sina McGill, guys. I'm a Charlottesville city councillor.
Thank you.
We close the program. First, we'll let you know where you can find the interview for them, for the folks that are just tuning in. We'll archive it on iloveceville.com and we'll take the audio and turn it into a podcast. By close of business today, we'll syndicate the interview across seventeen Facebook pages, seventeen Twitter accounts, the third-largest Instagram in the community, and a newsletter that goes out to a hundred-and-eighteen inbox, a hundred-and-eighteen thousand inboxes every morning at eleven AM. We close with the same message, and it's the golden rule. I try to make the golden rule just about treating other people in your life how you want to be treated yourself. I feel like Charlottesville needs the golden rule. Central Virginia, the Commonwealth of the Country, needs the golden rule. Just give it a thought, just digest it. Jerry Miller, I Love Seaville Show. Congratulations to Sina McGill, your Charlottesville city councillor, the winner of the, of the votes. Pretty impressive, pretty impressive. Have a good afternoon, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was fun.
Yes, it was. Highest number of votes in record according to the Daily Progress since they started tracking-